From August, on August 5th to order and we will start as always with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and free and just for all.
And before we begin, we do have one counselor who's participating via Zoom and so my question to Counselor Matthews is was it impractical for you, for whatever reason, impractical for you to be here this evening?
Yes.
And is there anyone in the room with you this evening?
No, I am alone.
Thank you. And then the next item on our agenda is public forum and so we do have some people participating via Zoom and some people participating here in the audience. So I'm gonna start with the people who are here in the audience and then I will ask if there's anyone who's on Zoom who is interested in making a public comment. So I will start with the people in the audience. Is there anyone interested in making a public comment tonight?
Is it open to any subject?
Yes.
Please don't touch the microphone though.
And public comment, just to let everybody know, is limited to three minutes per person, so we just ask that you respect that time limit.
Thank you very much. I'm George Wool. I live at 125 Main Street, number 23. I've been a resident of New Market for four years and I've resided in New Hampshire for 40 years. Maybe this is the wrong time, but you're gonna be talking about this ordinance regarding the mask ordinance. Is this the right time to speak about that?
This is, yes.
Okay. I'll put it in a nutshell. My request is that you consider providing the residents with guidance and not with an ordinance. There's a number of reasons for that, but particularly the state of New Hampshire has done a commendable job with managing this epidemic. The numbers of which, 165,000 people have been tested in New Hampshire, 6,513 have been tested positive. And that gives us a rate of less than two tenths of one percent in terms of the population that's test positive. And then of those that have not survived, the general population survival rate is 99.97%. New Hampshire as a state, I think we do a very good job with thinking intelligently for ourselves and we do a good job with listening to what our government has to offer in terms of recommendations and proposals on how we should live. And I think we do very well with following guidances. But there's parts of our society that don't appreciate being told what to do. So my request is that you give this consideration and you consider at this time providing people with reference on what you'd like to do or a guideline versus a directive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Then I will move on. And if you decide you want to speak later, that's fine. But I will move on to the people who are participating via Zoom. And I can see faces, so if people want to just, if you want to raise your hand and I'll, okay. The person in the green shirt, you raised your hand first, so.
Okay, can I be heard okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Rick Miller. I'm up here in remotely. I'm actually at work right now. I've been a resident of the town essentially my whole life and I want to echo my statement, or I want to echo the statements of the individual who made his comments a moment ago. I certainly want to go on record as saying that I believe that it's important that we wear masks and social distancing and all that stuff. But it should be a guidance, not a hard law. It seems to me that if it becomes a hard law, that it becomes a weapon for someone to, and I guess maybe that's not the right word to use, but it becomes something that someone could say, hey, listen, you know, you better take care of me or I'm gonna say that you weren't wearing your mask or so on and so forth. It should be a reminder that, yes, it's a good thing to do, but it should not have the force of you better do it or I'm gonna tell. You know, it just seems kind of something that some of the more childish people out there could use to hurt people and cause problems with other people. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Phil Nizaro.
So thanks, Phil Nizaro, Raymond Lane. So good evening, counselors. Having spent six years on this council, I certainly don't envy you having to vote on this. I know you've probably been considering this for a while and having spent time with the council, I know most of you probably have mostly generally an idea of how you're gonna vote on this. But, you know, as your chair and vice chair could tell you, I always try to keep an open mind even when I had a particular leaning on a subject. And so it's in that spirit that I'm here tonight, or virtually here tonight. So I have many reasons that I'm in opposition to this ordinance, but for time purposes, I'm limited to three. First, my question is where is the emergency necessitating an emergency ordinance? So in your packets, as you've already seen in the data that's been spoken before, the town manager is about to brief you that there's only been 13 cases in New Market since this started and a one to four range that are active today. That is one tenth, that is a tenth of one percent that have tested positive within New Market. And none of our surrounding communities have even had as half, as high as half of one percent infected over the entire course of this situation. So when I was in the council, I saw many solutions in search of a problem and in my, I feel like this might be another one of those situations. So second, what gives the town, my question is what gives the town the authority to do this? So as you know, we're not a homural state, much to my chagrin, and a municipality cannot do anything without enabling legislation. So in my research, and albeit I am not a lawyer, I could find no subsection in Title III, Chapter 47 that grants this power to the town council. Forty-seven colon 12 grants the authority over the health officer, but there's no language in that legislation, Title 10, Chapter 128, that provides the town health officer any purview here. So I am certain we pay lawyers to review this, but I am just as certain that you can expect to continue paying lawyers when a resident can test this in court. And third, I think that we have to ask ourselves how far you're willing to go to enforce this. No law should be passed that we aren't willing to use all means of enforcement necessary to ensure it is followed. With this law, you're basically deputizing local business owners to enforce it by turning customers away who aren't in compliance. You're encouraging people who are so inclined to call the police department when they see people not wearing masks and because of this ordinance, police will have to respond. And are we really willing to have people state that they can't wear a mask for medical reasons or their child isn't wearing one because they're below the age of the ordinance's age of 10 years old threshold and have a business owner or a police officer to ask them to show their papers that document their condition or the child's age? What will we do when someone rightfully refuses to state their condition because they're protected by the American Disability Act? Will we force the police department to open investigations using law enforcement's HIPAA law, exceptions to the HIPAA laws? Are we willing to put police officers in the middle of this contentious situation over masks? Asking our dedicated and hardworking police officers to insert themselves in the middle of this heated situation is both unfair and could result in unintended consequences that none of us want to see. Look, at the end of it, ordinances are laws and laws are nothing but force. So I beg the council not to approve this ordinance. In a time when our country and community, when we should be doing everything possible to build social connections, this attempt to force compliance to the will of a single group will do the opposite. Walls can be built without laying a single brick. Please do not create the conditions for yet another brick in the wall that divides us all. Finally, I have a PhD in psychology and I deployed to Afghanistan while I was in the army. I know this current condition is scary. I'm a type one diabetic, so when you talk about the vulnerable populations, the ones who should be most fearful of this, you're talking about me. But I know what fear can do to us. I've seen it. It comes from a very old place in our brain and takes over until everything.
Phil froze.
All right. I think we lost Phil. We'll let him finish his thought if he can regain his connection. But until then, I will move on and see if there's anyone else participating via Zoom who wishes to make a public comment. There are a few people participating on the phone and so I, because I'm not seeing any, oh, Phil, did you want to finish your thought?
So we're gonna get cut off there. Gonna lose a lot of its power having it cut off. At what point did I say something to piss Steve off and maybe shove me out? Where were we? Is anyone listening? Did anyone?
Well, you were talking, you, one of the last things that we heard, you were talking about being one of the vulnerable populations.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, really have a climate, the crescendo of that moment. So it'll be hard to recreate it, but I'll try anyway. So, thanks. Right. So I was saying that I have a PhD in psychology and I deployed to Afghanistan while I was in the army. So I know the current situation is scary and that I'm a type one diabetic. So certainly when you're talking about vulnerable populations, I get it because I'm one of those people. But I do, but I also know what fear can do to us because I've seen it. It comes from a very old place in our brain and it takes over until everything is seen through the lens of fear. But a long time ago, in a very dark moment for me, a wise person taught me that is when situations are scariest, people look to their leaders and base their reactions on theirs. So tonight you have a choice. You can continue to reinforce the fear or you can say we'll take a more measured and reasoned response like the previous speaker suggested and help reduce the fear and maybe even heal some of the growing tension in our community and country. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing, I see, there are some people participating via the phone and so any of those individuals, if you are interested in making a public comment, you can speak up and I will give you the floor. So seeing none, I will, and last call for anybody here in the building, I will close public comment. Uh. Oh, I don't know.
I do not have that. Can I join the meeting?
I don't know that that would be considered. Oh. Sorry, we're just balancing our two different technologies here, in person and digital. And making sure that we've given everyone the opportunity to voice their thoughts. So bear with us.
The chats are gone.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no other comments, I'm going to close the public comment at 7:13. And moving on, the next item of business is for the town council to consider acceptance of minutes. And so we have, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from our June 17th, 2020 non-public meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from June 17th, 2020.
Is there any discussion, questions, changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
The next item is our July, oh no, our July 15th, 2020 meeting minutes and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 15th, 2020 non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Regular, this is the regular meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Are there any questions, changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll have the July 15th non-public meeting minutes at our next meeting. The next item is our town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to give an update on the tropical storm last evening. We had two streets that were closed for a portion of the day today. They are reopened as I look out to the Public Works Director. No, they're not. So we're still trying to get those reopened. I know that Eversource is having a difficult time getting staff up here because Connecticut also got hit pretty hard. So there's a number of people down there. Just on our update on the COVID response for case numbers, I just wanted to provide you with an update on the number of cases that we've had and have, and have had as of July 29th. As of that date, we know we have between one and four cases in town. As you're aware, we cannot report actual numbers when it is four or below due to the possibility of identifying the individuals. However, since March 1st, New Market has 13 reported cases. In comparison to our surrounding communities, we are actually somewhat lucky. I provided a chart to the council of the greater Seacoast area of communities and what their numbers are. Portsmouth has had the most with 89, I'm sorry, Dover's had the most, 109. Portsmouth had the next highest with 89 and Rochester with 64. But what I did is I also took it by the percentage of the population actually infected. And in that situation, Portsmouth became the highest because they actually had 0.4% of their population, not 1%, less than a percent, infected. New Market was actually the lowest of all the communities. It was 13 individuals and a population of 9,460. The population infected was 0.14%. In comparison, the state is 0.48%, so not half a percent. In the United States, the whole is 1.31%. We're also continuing to be, we are continuing to be vigilant about the virus and we're monitoring any outbreaks as well as preparing for potential second surge in the fall or winter. We're ordering PPE and reviewing things that we can do better if the next surge comes. In addition, we're also looking at the impact on the economy, namely unemployment. I provide the council with a chart that compares the country, the state and the portions of metropolitan area which we are in and the town unemployment rate. With no surprise, our unemployment rate jumped in April when everything was shut down. We went from unemployment rate of 2.3%, which is actually negligible in March, to an unemployment rate of 18.1% in April. We're now down to 11.2%, but that's still a significant increase of last year's unemployment rate, which is 2.5% at the same time. So again, we are working on, still have, we're still having our calls with Homeland Security. We're working with the Secretary of State's office right now to secure the necessary PPE for the primary and general election coming up in September. And just working still with department heads to try to reopen more things as we move along. The next item is regarding school reopening. The town emergency management team, which is myself as emergency management director, health officer, the fire chief and the police department, met with the superintendent of schools on Monday, July 27th to hear the proposed reopening plan a day before it was presented. This plan was created by a reopening committee, which the New Hampshire Department of Education recommended be made up of family and student representatives, nurses, student wellness staff, teachers representing various grade levels, facility staff, collective bargaining representatives and public health officials. Of town staff, only the recreation director and school resource officer were involved in the process. I want to give an update on the fiscal year 20 expense and revenue report. At the end of June in the fiscal year, we expended 95% of the budget, of the general fund budget, with an unaudited amount of $3,000, $362,484 remaining in the budget. There is gonna be one correction to this because we did not get a bill for workers' compensation insurance from our provider and that's about $120,000. That being said, we are much better off this year than last year. On the revenue side, we did see a slight increase in the general fund revenue even though the, through the pandemic. Motor vehicle registrations were about $45,000 over last year and $151,225 over budgeted amount. Building permits, though, did not meet budget, being under about $1,300. However, it's about a $5,500 decrease over last year. I did attach a financial report to my report. The next item is that also in the budget, solid waste costs were $112,000 over budget due to hauling costs. I'm in the process of reviewing the price we charge for our pay-as-you-throw bags. We have not had an increase since about 2008. In comparison, New Market charges $2.25 for a $30 gallon bag and $1.15 for a 15 gallon bag. Dover, who just had an increase, is $3.91 for a 30 gallon bag and $2.34 for a 15 gallon bag. Exeter's $2.50 for a 33 gallon bag and $1.25 for a 15. Raymond is $4.25 for a 33 gallon bag and $3.25 for a 13 gallon bag. And Summersworth is $2 for a large bag and $1.45 for a 15. In order to begin to offset costs, I recommend that we phase in an increase over the next year. I'm gonna work on the numbers to adjust the price and have that shortly. At the last meeting, the chair mentioned that we met with the superintendent of schools and the chair of the school board to discuss a number of items, including the facilities director position. As you know, due to the pandemic, we on the town side froze all hiring. We are now ready to move forward. The superintendent requested that we review the memorandum of understanding with the position now being a school employee instead of a town employee. I submitted a proposed revised MOU with that in place. This individual would almost serve on a consultant basis for the town, assisting staff with lawn drainage planning and projects. I'm waiting for the superintendent's comments and that's all I have for tonight.
Are there any comments, questions for the town manager? I am not seeing any. So.
Tony, I pushed the request to speak button.
Oh, sorry. It's not coming up on here, so I don't know if that is gonna be, continue to be an issue. So if it is, just wave.
Okay.
Or speak up. Thanks for sharing.
Just the first point. Steve, thanks for looking into that bag pricing issue. Now this is something that we were, was brought back up in March. And as solid waste prices go up, we do need to effectively price our bags and that hopefully people see the incentive to use our public composting facilities at the transfer station. A lot of people are seeing ways to reduce their costs. So as bags go up, it's gonna be more important for people to use the composting. And then the second thing, regarding the change from the facilities director as a town employee to a school employee, what was the specific reason for the request?
My understanding was that the superintendent felt like there wasn't, that the school did not enough supervision of the employee and was requesting that the individual be on their, on their side. Am I, I don't know if I'm missing anything there.
I think the only other piece was the salary because I think that they were contributing a higher percentage of the salary.
When we originally had the two positions shared, we basically split it down the middle. The finance director was gonna be a town, a school employee and the facilities director would be a town employee. One of the reasons also was that if an issue came up, that the public works would also help the facilities director with projects. We had the staff that was able to do that. So that's why we had, we did that even though we knew that the larger portion was gonna come from the school side.
And is that gonna continue going forward for this position under the new memorandum of understanding?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Going forward under the new MOU, will the school continue to contribute more towards the salary?
Yes. I would almost, my recommendation would be a flat fee from the town just to use as a contracted basis. But again, I haven't, I haven't heard anything back.
Okay, thank you.
And just so that everyone's aware, the way this, the process went last, when we, when we initially approved the MOU, it does come to the council and the council approves it. So we'll have a chance to weigh in on those items. I'm not seeing any other requests to speak. I did just want to mention the, the cost of solid waste as town manager is aware and the director of public works is aware. It's something that I have been, you know, because of the, my work on the Energy and Environment Committee and just, I think, in general, seminars that I've gone to over the last couple of years, it's a well-known fact that the cost of recycling is increasing dramatically. And, and there are lots of reasons for that, which I, I won't get into. But the cost of our, of our waste is just going up and there have been other towns that have had to cut recycling programs or have, you know, drastically increased their bag cost. So those are things, you know, right now we're in a good place with our contract for municipal waste, but that won't last forever. And this is something that it's, I think it's really smart that we're being proactive with this. So I appreciate that. And, oops. Sorry. And I'm not seeing any other requests to speak, so we can move on to committee reports.
I would like to say something if I could. I don't know if it's too late to speak.
It is. The public, the public forum's already over.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. So the next item would be committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Is it, is it not working?
Yeah, I, I had the button.
Yeah, I, I had the button pushed.
You want me to?
Okay, yeah.
I was just going to give a quick update and say that the budget committee met last night. We had to postpone our original meeting from, uh, le- the last Monday of the month and move it forward one. Um, Joe LaMontina is, uh, taking charge to schedule some presentations for us for the budget committee to better understand, uh, taxation in New Hampshire.
Hey folks, we can't hear Zach's microphone.
Speak, get close to your mic, see if that.
Can you hear me now?
No.
What would you like me to do?
Hold on.
Thank you.
Could you ask, I'm having a mic problem.
I can call in if you want.
No.
Okay.
No, you cannot, actually.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Tim.
Fantastic. Um, I was saying, uh, that at our budget committee meeting on Monday, uh, Joe LaMontina, um, is going to, uh, spearhead a project to get, um, some presentations before the budget committee to better go through taxation in New Hampshire, um, its uses at the local level, the division between town governments, um, and the school side of things. Mostly as an educational piece for us as a budget committee to, um, help be more aware of, you know, our roles and our responsibility moving forward when, once we, the town council, present our budget to the budget committee and they have to make their recommendations to the town. Um, but aside from that, uh, nothing else, major.
Great.
Counselor Matthews.
Oh, Counselor Matthews, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, so the planning board, uh, doesn't meet until August eleventh, but the impact fee subcommittee got a cost study update from Bruce Mayberry. Again, this was, uh, if the town council does want to review our impact fees, we need to update them. So I emailed it a few hours ago, but the estimated cost to do this is seventeen thousand to twenty thousand dollars to do the update. And I'm sure that we will have another update once the committee meets again and probably the planning board needs to discuss it as well. But you all have the study in your emails.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Sanders.
The, um, Arts and Tourism Committee met via Zoom, and we've picked our first project. And we're going to be in contact with the owners of the empty storefronts downtown and try to organize a art display or craftsman's display in the empty, in the empty storefronts. Um, so we will be reaching out to them over the course of the next couple of weeks.
That's great. I woke up instead of, I don't know why I'm looking at my computer to see if anybody wants to speak. Uh, are there any other committee reports? No, okay. All right, then moving on. We have Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash oh two paving for twenty twenty. And I would accept a motion, excuse me, to approve Resolution twenty twenty, uh, tw- dash twenty, twenty-one dash oh two.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash zero two paving improvements.
I'll second that.
Mr. Malaski.
You can take it off if nobody's, you know, six feet away from people.
Then we're getting in trouble.
As the fire chief.
The, uh, so on the paving, we'd be extending the contract. It'd be a decrease of a dollar per ton. It's the one, if it's something good, if COVID could happen, that's the one thing that did happen, that did help that. We'd be starting next week, essentially, we're penciled in already, if everybody's in agreement, to extend the contract. And the list of roads is in the resolution. Bell and Flynn have been doing a great job for us. They stand behind their work, weren't you, or? We're following the plan, other than we, we're keeping Bay Road out because of the water main project for next summer. But as, aside from that, we're pretty much following the, the plan. We are a couple of roads behind, but not, but not terribly.
Any questions for, um?
Yeah, you sent a great comment. Um, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is the second time now you've come to us with a price decrease, and I really appreciate seeing that, so just wanted to say thank you for, uh, making that, you know, keep coming.
Where does the price decrease? Like, why is that happening?
Oil.
Yeah.
Counselor Matthews?
Uh, I just wanted to point out, in case the members of the public haven't seen it yet, but it also states that, um, in a letter from the vice president, that quote, "In the event that the price of liquid asphalt should decrease further, the town of Newmarket would receive a commensurate credit, uh, as well." And then I just wanted to make a comment that, um, you know, this is five hundred thousand dollars for road paving. Um, roads are expensive to maintain and, uh, it's five hundred thousand dollars because of the way that we've developed. Um, we build homes further away. We have subdivisions with small number of houses, uh, on them, trying to maintain roads, water, and sewer. In most cases, our subdivisions don't actually, uh, pay for the roads they're on. So, you know, it's just, the way we develop increases the cost of our maintenance, and it's something we really need to look at going forward.
Um, not seeing any other comments. And I just wanted to say, like, I appreciate the fact that we're following the plan because the plan, um, for anybody who isn't aware, uh, if we maintain the roads, um, according to the plan, in the end, we will be saving money. So, uh, we have seen in the past what happens if we defer these improvements. And so then you're off, then we're reclaiming roads. Um, so by doing, by staying on track, um, in the end, we're, we're saving the taxpayers money. So, thank you for making sure that, that, because this has been on track now for four years, five years?
Yeah, yeah, at least four. We've been playing catch-up. It took a while, but, uh, like, for instance, we're only reclaiming out of all those listed roads just two.
That's great.
You know, the others are overlays, so we're, we're almost there.
Great, I'm not seeing any other comments, um, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next is for us to consider nominations and appointments. And so, um, tonight, one of the, uh, first things that we're going to do is to fill the vacancy, uh, created when Counselor Finch gave his resignation. So we have, um, we had four people who submitted letters of interest. One of those, um, persons has decided to, uh, drop out, and she doesn't want to be considered. Uh, and so we do still have three people. I mean, what I'm going to do is, uh, give those three individuals the opportunity to, um, say a few words. Again, to, um, keep it to three minutes, please. Um, and I just thought I would go alphabetically by last name, um.
Madam Chair, um, Mr. Pike has indicated that he cannot join us this evening due to a power outage at his home, um, up in Maine. So he sends his regrets, but is still interested in the position.
Great, thank you. Uh, so we will start, uh, with Scott Blackstone, um, if, if you're interested in, uh, saying a few words and introducing yourself.
Good evening, my name is Scott Blackstone. I live on, uh, Spring Street, and I also own, uh, my kids live on Pine Street, and we're, our, our backyards touch each other. Um, I have, um, lived here for about six or seven years, but my kids have lived here a lot longer. Um, and I have a lot of contacts within the town. For instance, um, Michelle at Crack Skulls, I've known since she was in high school. Um, and, uh, I really like this town. I really enjoy, um, going down to Main Street. Uh, at least I used to enjoy going down to Main Street, getting coffee, getting food. Um, and, uh, I hope to do that again soon. Um, I have no particular agenda. I'm not interested in, in any particular, um, you know, trying to accomplish anything. I really like the way the town is, and I would just like to, you know, keep it going. Um, so I've, I participated in, in some school, um, things where the, um, the new hiring of the business manager was part of that interview team. I have participated in professional organizations. I'm familiar with, uh, Roberts Rules of Order, that kind of stuff. Uh, and I'm currently, uh, a member of the trustee of the trust fund, so I, I actually write the checks that you guys approve. Um, and that, that term is ending, you know, shortly. Um, so I don't know if I would have to resign, uh, to do this, uh, probably. Yeah, it sounds to me like it would be a conflict of interest. Um, but there's, uh, but there are two other members of the trustee of the trust fund. There are two other trustees, so, um, I, I don't think that would be an issue. We, we used to meet about three times a year. Um, now, we haven't met this year at all, and I don't think we will. Um, we just kind of talk on email, and we come over and sign checks. And I manage the bank account. Um, I was looking for something a lot, uh, more involved than, than, you know, a couple of meetings a year. Um, and this looked like a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and the next, um, person is Megan, is it Brayback?
Hello, everyone, I'm Megan Brayback. Um, I also live on Spring Street. Nice to meet you, neighbor. Um, I moved here with my partner, um, on Halloween. We purchased our first home here in Newmarket. Um, and we were both really excited to be setting down roots in this town. Uh, my partner is born and raised in New Hampshire, but I come from a military family. So I've moved my whole life, graduated from UNH, um, and then kind of moved around as I got settled in my career. And when we were ready to purchase a house and put down some roots, um, I was very excited to select Newmarket because of the active downtown, the reputation, um, for just being a community that's very tightly knit. Um, so I was very excited to get involved in a town once I knew I was going to be able to stick around for more than a couple of years. So we have every intention of living here for the next ten-plus years. Um, I do have some related experience. I served on multiple boards of directors of, uh, C-four and C-three nonprofit organizations. So having to make those types of decisions, um, that affect a greater group of people is something I've done. Um, and I stepped down from my most recent board position to complete my master of public administration degree, which I finished a year ago. Um, so I was able to take coursework in town budgets and some other very specific, um, topics. So I'm very excited by any opportunity to be able to give back to this town. I'm really excited to be part of the community. Um, but when I saw this position available, it seemed really relevant to my skills and my interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the letter from Mr. Pike?
Sure, please.
July twenty-third, two thousand twenty, dear Newmarket Town Councilors, this letter of application is for the town council vacancy recently announced. A Newmarket resident since nineteen ninety-nine, I served on the Newmarket Town Council from two thousand thirteen to two thousand nineteen, with the last two years as chair. During my tenure, I was a town council liaison to the budget committee, planning board, conservation committee, and dam committee, as well as many other subcommittees. I'm currently a member of the coastal adaptation work group, municipal division discussion group, and the Newmarket Riverfront Advisory Ad-Hot Committee. I will be away on August fifth with unreliable internet access at that location. I'll attempt to attend the town council meeting remotely, but if unsuccessful, I hope you will still consider my application. Sincerely, Dale S. Pike.
Thank you. And so the process, um, at this point is, um, for us to deliberate and, um, make any comments. And then we will vote on the, by stating the name of the person, um, that you would like to, to fill, fulfill the, the vacancy. Um, so I'm just going to open it up and see if anyone has, uh, any comments or questions, thoughts.
I don't, I don't know if this is, so I appreciate all of the applications that we, you know, have. This is, to me, for me, this is really a difficult decision because we have so, we have three people that are, you know, willing, very qualified, and, you know, it's, it's a tough decision. Um, with that said, for any two people that don't, um, get appointed tonight, I would like to ask you to please run for council. We will have three spots, um, that come up. Um, one being the finishing out of this one, for, I believe that's two more years. And then we'll have two three-year spots. The signups will be at the end of January. So please sign up and please run for a council position if you don't, aren't appointed this evening, even if you are, because there's going to be three, so, but thank you. So, um, that, that's really what I wanted to kind of say.
I'm not seeing any other comments, so, um, I, I do have a couple of thoughts. Um, and I completely agree with Counselor Burns. It's, um, I think that we're really lucky to have three qualified applicants. Um, I wish that we had had, uh, multiple applicants. Uh, you know, when I ran, uh, our last election and the election before that, we had no one run for, um, two positions. So this is a very nice change, uh, of events. So with that said, I, I do, uh, and in full disclosure, I had reached out to Counselor Pike, or the former Counselor Pike, um, because I served with him for five years on the council. And, um, it's, it's my opinion that, um, this is a six, it's about six months, um, that, that this position will last for. And having, having, um, I've served on the council now, this is my seventh year, but prior to that, spent a lot of time, um, learning about town government and learning, um, uh, about the issues that we're facing in the town. And I know how, I know what the learning curve is, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Um, it's a pretty steep learning curve, uh, it can be. Uh, and we have so much happening right now, um, that I had reached out to, uh, Dale Pike and asked him to, to fill this vacancy. Um, so, uh, because I just think that we'd have somebody who can hit the ground running. Um, that's not to discount, uh, either of these other two applicants that we have, because I think, again, I think it's fantastic that we have, um, multiple applicants. So, um, I don't have any other comments to make, um.
Some counselors do.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't want to speak.
Um, I had emailed both the, um, individuals that are here. They both had said that they would plan on running in March. Um, so I think that that should come into the calculus. Um, I don't know if, um, Mr. Pike had intended to run again, or if this, if he wanted to come out of retirement, or if this, uh... As if not, I, I mean, I would prefer someone that was going to run in March, in my opinion, you know? As you said, the learning curve and et cetera. Um, so, yeah, that's.
I don't believe that he would run.
Yeah, I, uh, okay.
So, I don't want to speak further.
I didn't ask him because I assumed he didn't, having left, uh, the council, I think he probably wasn't running.
Madam Chair, Counselor Matthews has his hand raised.
Well, thank you. Counselor Matthews?
Yeah, I want to excellent, um, uh, comment on what Counselor Kuiper said. I, I completely agree with him. Um, I actually was able to speak to all three candidates. Um, Megan and Scott said that they would run in March. Dale said he's unsure, which can go either way. Um, I totally understand the argument for having someone with lots of experience in now. Um, I do want to share my perspective, though, which is that I didn't have any experience. I hit the ground running in March during a pandemic, and I've been fine. Um, and I do think it's important to get someone in who will run in March. You know, if we just kick the can down the road, in March, you know, we might have to have another person who will have to train up to speed. So either way, I think we're going to bring someone new on, and I hope we bring people new on. And I think it's fine to bring them on now. Um, so I would prefer someone who is running in March, and, and two of the candidates have, have committed to doing that.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments before we? Are there any other comments before we? And if you wanna call the roll, please.
Sure. So, what I'm, I'm gonna ask you is to state the last name of your preferred candidate. If no candidate gets four votes, then the candidate with the least number of votes will be taken off, and then we'll go through the process again, and just with the, the two highest vote getters. Okay? Counselor Sanders.
Uh, Megan Brayback.
Counselor Matthews.
Brayback.
Counsel Dumas.
Brayback.
Counsel Kuiper.
Blackstone.
Counsel Burns.
Brayback.
Counsel Weinstein.
Pike.
Four to one to one, uh, couns-, uh, Ms. Brayback has been elected town counselor. If you would like, she can take the oath right now and participate in tonight's meeting and take a vote.
Fantastic.
Or you get the oath of office.
I guess the only question that I would have is, do you feel, would you feel comfortable jumping in and, and voting on? Everything else we have remaining.
There's one item that you have to vote on. And I can say, you've heard what it is.
Whether or not you feel prepared.
Um, I mean, it, it, you know, it's been a well-publicized, um, item, so I do feel that I've done my research and have a little more of an opinion on it.
Try to get an oath of office.
May help to get a microphone as well.
Yeah.
Could, wanna recess for a minute? Actually, never mind.
You sure?
Yeah. Yeah. I can do it as well. Come on, wait. Come on, wait, come on. Can do it right there to mic. Please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
I, Megan Brayback.
Of Newmarket do solemnly swear.
Of Newmarket do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Megan Brayback.
Of Newmarket.
Of Newmarket.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
On me.
On me.
As a member of the town council.
As a member of the town council.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
The laws of the state of New Hampshire.
The laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the articles of the Newmarket Town Charter.
And the articles of the Newmarket Town Charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. So, our next item of business, we do have one other, um, uh, appointment to consider, and that is, uh, for Roberta Branca to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee with a term to expire April twenty twenty-three. So, I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve Roberta Branca to the Energy and Environment, um, Committee.
I will second that.
Any, um, questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brayback.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Our next item is ordinance, I'm just opening it. Um, ordinance, um, number one for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and that's an ordinance requiring the wearing of face coverings under certain conditions within the town of Newmarket.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Procedurally, this is an emergency ordinance. It's not a regular ordinance. So, we just wanna make sure it's stated as emergency ordinance, not emergency ordinance. It's not ordinance number one, it's emergency ordinance number one.
Thank you.
I do not.
And I will read it.
Yeah.
Uh, so the town of Newmarket ordains, uh, number one purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to require the wearing of face coverings under certain conditions during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The Newmarket Town Council has the authority to enact such an emergency ordinance in accordance with section three point nine of the Town Charter in New Hampshire RSA forty-seven, colon seventeen, Roman numeral fifteen, and RSA one forty-seven, colon one. Number two ordinance. Employees of all businesses shall wear a face covering over their mouth and nose when interacting with the public and whenever they are within six feet of a coworker or a customer. Members of the public entering any business, including without limitation any outdoor area where business of any sort is conducted, work site, or government building must wear a face covering, such as a fabric mask, scarf, or bandana, over their nose and mouth. Policies regarding face coverings in governmental buildings within the geographical boundaries of the town of Newmarket, adopted by the governmental entity having jurisdiction, are hereby recognized by this ordinance and shall not be deemed to be contradictory to the requirements stated herein. Members of the public entering a restaurant for the purpose of picking up food for takeout or any other purpose must wear a face covering over their mouth and nose. Members of the public dining indoors or outdoors at a restaurant may remove face covering while seated at their table. Members of the public must wear a mask when entering, using, or leaving the restroom of a restaurant. Members of the public utilizing sidewalks and other pedestrian public ways or public recreational lands are strongly encouraged, but not required, to wear face covering to the fullest extent practicable, and especially when there is a high likelihood of coming into contact with others and social distancing of at least six feet may not be possible. As used herein, face covering means a covering made of cloth, fabric, or other soft or permeable material without holes that covers only the nose, mouth, and surrounding areas of the lower face. A face covering may be factory-made or homemade and improvised from ordinary household material. Notwithstanding the above, this order does not require children under ten years of age to wear face covering. Parents should make their own judgment. Face covering is not recommended for children less than two years of age. A face covering is also not required to be worn by any person if said person can show a medical professional has advised that wearing a face covering may pose a risk to said person for health-related reasons. Number three penalties. Anyone who violates this ordinance may be subject to fines in the amount of one hundred dollars for the first offense, two hundred dollars for the second offense, and five hundred dollars for the third and subsequent offenses, and/or may be summoned to the Exeter District Court. Number four, takes effect in accordance with section three point nine of the Town Charter, this emergency ordinance shall be effective upon adoption and shall stand repealed as of the sixty-first day following the date on which it was adopted. But this shall not prevent reenactment of the ordinance by the town council in the manner specified in section three point nine of the charter if the emergency still exists. First reading, August fifth, twenty twenty. And with that.
Madam Chair, there is gonna need to be a clerical, uh, amendment that it's no longer the Exeter District Court, but the Brentwood. Thank you. The Tenth Circuit Brentwood Division.
And did you want to, um, explain the ordinance at all, or the guidelines?
As the council is aware, uh, there was a case a few weeks ago in which the city announced, the city of Nashville adopted a mandatory mask ordinance late spring, early summer. Uh, it was brought to court, and the court ruled that the ordinance can stay in place until, uh, the final hearing. I brought to the council's attention at the last meeting to, that that's possible, and the council requested that. I, uh, worked with the police chief and legal counsel to write an ordinance to address this for our municipality. I worked actually closely with the town administrator of Durham, uh, to, so we somewhat, at the beginning of this process modeled each other's ordinances. We do not, we no longer do. They just got much more strict, and certain items of mandatory wearing a mask and cer- certain sections of the community. I did, we did not put that in there. Uh, this was already introduced by that time. So, that's where we got it. This was reviewed by legal counsel. I know there was a concern or question, under what authority we have that. The judge ruled that under RSA forty-seven seventeen fifteen, which is the powers of city councils, which falls to us under RSA, under the RSA that, as a town council cha- town, we have the authorities of city councils. But RSA, um, forty-seven seventeen fifteen, as the judge allowed as miscellaneous bylaws, which is relative to the grade of streets and the grade of width of sidewalks. I will get to the part that's actually, um, but no bylaw, the, the council may make any other bylaws and regulations which may seem for the well-being of the city, but no bylaw or ordinance shall be repugnant to the constitutions or laws of the state. So, that's where we have the authority according to, um, the judge at this point. Again, it has not been the final ruling on whether or not mask ordinances are, are proper. Uh, as I mentioned, this, the town of Durham did enact their ordinance on Monday evening, and the city of Portsmouth is looking at enacting one. I've not seen the wording of their ordinance. So, that's how we got here.
Counsel Dumas.
I just had a couple of questions, uh, for the town manager.
Sorry. Did anybody make a motion and second to adopt the ordinance?
No, we did not. Thank you. I would accept a motion to adopt the emergency ordinance number one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I will make a motion to adopt the emergency ordinance number one, twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one. Sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have Counsel Sanders. I, sorry, I put the tape delay. Counsel Matthews.
Now we can have a second.
For the town manager, I just have a couple of questions. Um, I did notice at the bottom, it says first reading, August fifth, twenty twenty. There's also a second reading slash public hearing, um, for September second.
That's, that's not correct. As an emergency ordinance, the council adopts it on the night. There, the, it's waived for the second reading.
I understand. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Um, if I may continue. Um, at this point in time, does the New Hampshire state government believe that there is an active state of emergency regarding the COVID-nineteen pandemic?
They do.
And that, in general, regardless of the severity in different levels, uh, in different communities throughout the state, that state of emergency does apply to the entire state?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One question is, in regard, just for clarification, I think I know the answer, but I just wanna be clear. In regard to the golf course, would this mean that golfers have to wear a mask while golfing?
It does not.
Okay.
Do we need to explicitly say that?
I think, if we, I think under recreation, it. Trying to find exactly the section.
Cause it's in number two. It says, "Members of the public entering any business, including without limitation any outdoor area where business of any sort is conducted." Counsel Sanders.
There were separate guidelines that the state issued for golf courses, and I believe if, if they were following those where you can't share a cart with someone unless they're from your household, you have to wear a mask when you're going to pay your greens fees, you can't borrow clubs anymore, you have to wear a mask when you go into the clubhouse. Um, I would assume that those role, those rules where they're following those would be sufficient for our purposes?
Yeah, and as a not-that-great-of-a-golfer, I could tell you that, those rules are actually more open now that you can share.
Okay.
Carts and driving ranges are open. Um, it's somewhat back to normal. Um, if you'd like, under section four, "Members of the public utilizing sidewalks and other pedestrian public ways, public recreational lands," I could put, or golf courses, are strongly encouraged but not required to wear a face covering. I mean, my, I think the, the enforcement of this would not enforce anything more than the guidelines that the, uh, governor's, uh, committee has set, especially for like gatherings, um, golf courses, those kind of items. It's just requires, requiring them in businesses. But, yeah.
Counsel Matthews.
Yeah, I, I think just on that, you know, if you exempt golf courses, aren't you inherently exempting the restaurant and takeout on it? I think, I think this might need to be a little bit more specific than just golf courses. It needs to be specific to, you know, active recreation on private recreational facilities or something more specific.
I think in my sense there is, it's, there's two different sets of guidelines. There is ones for the ga- golf course, and there is one for the restaurants. So, I could tell you that golf, when golf courses open, the restaurants associated with the golf courses did not. So, you'd have to pay your green fees, golf, and go home. But then since golf restaurants opened, the clubhouses reopened at the same, same levels and same rules of the restaurants. So, I, I don't think, and again, when, those, those on staff are gonna enforce this, uh, will not differentiate, oh, well, it's a golf course and the, the restaurant can be open versus the rest of them. It'd be treated the same as a restaurant. Which, that's what it's, it is. It's not a golf course. The golf course is the course.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Matthews?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Oh. Counselor Brayback.
Thank you. Um, so I see that this talks about, um, patrons of restaurants and employees of businesses when interacting with the public or when they're within, you know, a certain distance of coworkers. Um, but I'm wondering how that would potentially, um, affect kitchen staff in restaurants who are potentially preparing food but not required to wear masks, and whether that's anything we're concerned about.
Again, I, that would, the state guidelines would take, trump this one.
I would imagine they're an employee of a business.
Not interacting with the.
Not interacting with the public.
Oh, right, right, right. But it says whenever they are within six feet of a coworker.
And some, and they should when they're six feet of a coworker.
Right.
But most of them aren't. As far as we know. I mean, and, and I think this is one thing, and I'm gonna explain, so, as soon as the council requested that, we look at this ordinance. As the council is aware, it's the council's job to come up with policy and set policy. It's the town manager's job to enact the policies that are, uh, enacted by the council. So, I met with, uh, the police chief and the health officer, and how would we actually enact it? And the chief is here as well this evening. I think the first thing we'd like to get clear is, we are not gonna go out there and start handing out tickets for someone who doesn't have their mask on. This is an educational aspect. We've talked about using the softest gloves you could use to enforce this. Our neighboring community that enacted this ordinance, when I was driving home the other day, already has a sign up that says, "Wear a mask. It's the law." I was actually insulted by that sign, thinking that was too harsh. That it needs to be, you, you don't help the situation by doing that. We would begin an education system. We'd set up a website with a, we've. website with, I've already written a frequently asked question thing. I came up with a quick poster that has, you know, like we have, the questions that we're getting and I can, I'll even read some of these. How will we enforce it? If this is adopted, as we said, education is our first tool. We'll ask the people to wear a mask and explain to them why it's important. If they fail to comply, a fine may be issued. What's a mask? A mask is defined as a covering made of cloth, fabric, or other soft permeable material without holes that cover only the nose and mouth and surrounding areas of the lower face. Masks may be factory-made or handmade and improvised from ordinary household materials. When do I have to wear one? Shopping at a grocery store, retail establishment, sitting in the stands close to each other's while watching a sporting event, walking around your office, a place of work, when others are present, when standing in line at a store or event, at restaurants unless seated. I think that's the easiest way to explain a restaurant is unless you're seated, you have to have a mask on. When don't I have to wear one? This actually is a much longer list and it could go on forever. Exercising out or indoors and able to maintain a six-foot distance, walking on a sidewalk and you can maintain a six-foot distance, playing a sport or sporting activity, at home, in your car, when seated and adequately spaced from others at a food establishment. Do they work? Remember, you're not wearing one to protect yourself but other people. The CDC recommends cloth face coverings as a simple barrier to help prevent respiratory droplets from traveling into the air and onto other people when the person wearing the cloth face covering coughs, sneezes, talks, or raises their voice. So we're working, whatever the council's action, we are already being proactive in trying to get ready to implement the ordinance. I'm not, I don't even want to use the word enforce because we're going to implement it. And if the chief would like to speak, I'd like, if you have any issue? Yep.
So I want to just reiterate what the town manager said. This is not on our radar to be the mask police by any means. We're going to strongly encourage being good neighbors. We're going to strongly encourage education. We're going to strongly encourage accountability for our neighbor and our fellow citizen. But this is not on my radar right now. We're a busy police department with many priority calls throughout the day. We're not going to be setting up stakeouts on downtown New Market, coming in and SWAT teaming people who are not wearing masks. What we will do and what this ordinance does provide, if a business owner needs our assistance with someone who does not want to follow their internal policy already set in place, we'll come in and help you. But we're going to come in and help you with the approach of education and accountability to our fellow citizen. This isn't a revenue maker. This is about education. This is a health issue. And the last thing that my police officers want to do is have young people afraid of them because they're not wearing a mask. We're working really hard to keep our reputation up with this community. So I just wanted you to know, you're hearing it from the police chief here, that this is the approach we're going to take.
And I'm going to add something else with that. We do not want the public to call 911 if someone's not wearing a mask. That's not what 911 is for. We will put on these posters also what the correct number is, which is the, we have to discuss, but we'll figure that out. We don't want every, we don't want people to turn into mask vigilantes out there trying to enforce this, saying, oh, I saw Mrs. Smith not wearing a mask today. Go give her a fine. That's not what this is, this is not our intent to, how to enforce this.
Counsel Kuiper.
I first just want to say to everyone watching at home that I don't think any of us ever thought we'd be here discussing this. And we take no great pleasure in doing this. So just understand, we've all thought, I think, long and hard about this. I own a business downtown and I've thought about this a lot because I have people that run in, a lot of people wear a mask, but sometimes somebody comes in and they say, oh shoot, I forgot my mask, you know. Am I not going to sell them the food? I'm going to sell them the food because frankly, I need the money right now. You know, but if they come to the door and they don't have a mask and I said, hey, look, you know, it's actually our town, it's a town law, you know, you got to have a mask on. It takes the onus, it changes the conversation for the employees and the owners where they're not having to say like, look, it's our policy. Look, I'm making up these rules. Like, no, you can blame the town council. That's what the employees and the business owners can now blame us for this regulation. And I also would like to point out that, you know, if New Market was an island, we would probably be fine. We wouldn't need this ordinance. But in a short couple of weeks, there's going to be about 6,000 out-of-state students going to UNH. They're going to be getting tested regularly there, but their family's not when they come to visit. And I can tell you, you know, they do, they come and they eat in the restaurants, they attend the businesses, which we need that business. But we also need those outsiders to know that there's a requirement of masks. And that's actually mainly who, in my mind, this is geared towards. You know, I went to the police club the other day and everyone had masks on when they needed to, everyone. And there was no cop in there enforcing it. You know, everyone had them on. You know, I go into most of the restaurants and generally, everyone has masks on. You know, I was walking down the street today with my mask on and I saw this woman get out of her car to go to the Chinese restaurant and she stopped herself because she saw me with my mask on, got in her car, put hers on, and then got her takeout. And that's really what it's about. It's about, you know, we're doing this together. None of us want to wear masks. This is no great fun for any of us. It's hot, it's annoying. But I think just because of that influx of out-of-state students, that's why I think we need, we need to step it up just a little bit on the, on the, on the mask ordinance. I would also suggest maybe dropping the fine to fifty and a hundred for the second to fall more in line with some of our other ordinance, you know, some of the other fines that we have were more, I think, a little bit lower. I don't know if we can do that now. I assume we can.
If you want to make a motion to lower the fines.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to lower the fine to fifty dollars for the first offense and a hundred for the second.
Second.
Just while you're doing that, the third offense?
And the third offense, is there?
It's five hundred.
Okay, yeah, let's make, we can keep that at five hundred. You know, listening by that. Okay. Motion to lower the lower the fine to fifty.
I'll second that.
One hundred and five hundred. Second, Counsel Dumas. That was discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, is there any discussion on the amendment? No, I just want to say that I appreciate your perspective. I think that you have a unique perspective as, you know, at least among us, being not just a resident but a business owner. And so I just appreciate what you said.
We need to vote on the amendment.
What's that?
We need to vote on that amendment.
But I wanted to make that comment.
Yep.
So I'm not seeing any comments from the public.
On the amendment, Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brabek.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Amendment passes seven zero.
I did want to, there's one other change that I wanted to propose. Before I do that, I wanted to make a few comments. And that's, in my time on the council, and again, this is my seventh year, this, this issue brought about the most emails and the most feedback that I've seen during that time. That includes the changing of the direction on Church Street and the rights-based ordinance and from a lot of diverse groups of people and individuals in our community. So we've had lots of emails. We had public comment tonight. I will say that, so the number, you know, just to give people a sense, is probably around, I would say like three dozen emails, which is a lot. Maybe, maybe forty emails. I kind of lost count because they were still dribbling in at the end of the day. I, I looked through them and it was about a three to one margin, people who were in favor of this ordinance versus people who were against it.
Twenty to eleven.
Okay.
I counted.
Did that include like the, the recent ones that came in?
Yes.
So, all right, so two to one. And, you know, we're here because there is a global pandemic. Certainly the council didn't make that up. There are cases throughout the US that are increasing. It's been clearly established that wearing face coverings will, along with social distancing and frequent hand washing, will help to slow the spread of the virus. It's not going to stop it, but it will help to slow it. As Counselor Kuiper mentioned, UNH is about to welcome a lot of students to our surround, to our next-door neighbor and a lot of students will be coming to New Market as they have for years, whether to live here in New Market or to visit our establishments here in New Market. And I think educating those, mostly teenagers and young adults, is going to be important to maintain our community and maintain the levels of safety that we have had here in New Market. Along with that, we have our schools opening. I'm sure everyone has seen the news reports about schools that are opening in Georgia and then closing down two days later. And kids walking the halls in crowded hallways without masks on. And so I think that helping to reinforce those behaviors with the teenage population and the younger students as well, and just making that the norm. And it's unfortunate, nobody wants it to be the norm, but yet here we are. So with that said, I do think that some continuity between the requirements of the school and the requirements of the town is important. The school policy is that kindergarten, so all students from kindergarten and up will have a face covering during the day. And they have, you know, rules around that similar to, you know, if they're seated at their desk and they're social distanced, they don't have to have the face covering on. So I would ask, I would like to make an amendment for us to mirror that policy and have it be at age five rather than age ten. There's not a lot of clear guidance. You know, the CDC says, because I looked, that anyone two and below shouldn't wear masks. And then it's not real clear from, from there on. Just that the, they should, you know, there's a lot of shoulds. So, you know, this is a mandate, so it's a little bit different. And I think that we need to make that judgment. And so I would suggest a five-year age limit. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to amend our ordinance to, and that would be section...
Section six.
Section six, thank you. So that it would, does not require children under five years of age to wear face covering.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. The, the age five, I think, is appropriate not just to mirror the school, but they're also finding that the viral load carried by children of that age is even higher than the viral load of the older children. And we also have to be considerate of, because people have had to go back to work and daycare centers are closed, a lot of grandparents are stepping up to watch children and they need to be protected just as much as the kids do. Because the problem is they're going to end up, they might not be sick, they might not be symptomatic, but they're going to bring it home to grandma and grandpa. And certainly anything we can do to help the older people in the community. And I will admit, I have a vested interest, I am one of those, I think would be helpful. So I, I agree with the age five.
Along with that, I have to say, I just had this conversation with my mother. Because once, once my kids, you know, we've been in a place where we feel pretty comfortable with our current boundaries, but once the kids go back to school, we have to go back to not seeing each other. So any other comments about the amendment? If you could call the role.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brabek.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
No.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Amendment passes six to one. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I request two other amendments? To amend section four, to add after the words recreational lands or golf courses. So it would read, members of the public utilizing sidewalks or other pedestrian public ways, public recreational lands, or golf courses are strongly encouraged but not required to wear face covering to the fullest extent practicable, and especially when there is a high likelihood of coming into contact with others in social distances of at least six feet may not be possible.
Do we, so we'll vote on them separately?
Yeah, let's do it that way.
Ah, so I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions? If you could call the role, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brabek.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Amendment passes seven zero. And the second would be to amend section three and delete the words exodus district court and add in the Tenth Circuit Court, Brentwood Division.
Did anybody want to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
I'm seeing no discussion, so if you could call the role, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brabek.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to amend under voting record, strike vacant, add Counselor Megan Brabek.
Yeah, that's fine. You don't need a motion.
Just want to make sure.
Clerical. Yep.
Thank you. Counsel Matthews.
I just wanted to use my first comment to just say thanks to everyone who commented and to the people who, who asked to vote against this. Just, you know, what we were getting was vote no, that this adds demands on businesses, there's already people wearing masks, concerns about the fine costs. We didn't have mask ordinance in March or April, so why one now? You all are Nazis, the science is missed, it takes up valuable resources, it's unconstitutional, fines are too high. So I think that we, we have addressed most of the comments. I think I just wanted to address the comment about why we didn't do this in March and April. And it's because we weren't recommended by an organization to do it. I think that if we had tried to do this in April, I don't think that we could have voted for it. I think that this is a very narrowly tailored ordinance focusing on conduct during an unprecedented health crisis. So just to address that comment.
Just a couple.
Thank you. Yes.
Just to remind the council that this automatically is repealed in sixty-one days unless you guys decide to repeal it beforehand or extend it. So it automatically sunsets.
Counsel Dumas.
Can I follow? Just to ask, if the state of, if the statewide state of emergency has been removed prior to sixty-one days, will we have to manually go in and remove it?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Kuiper.
I just had one more comment that I forgot to bring up before. You know, a lot of shops have a sign that says, no shirt, no shoes, no service. And, you know, people don't call that unconstitutional because it's just a basic health requirement. And I know a lot of people think this is a bad idea on, you know, because we're, you know, we Americans are, you know, we're a liberal libertarian bent, you know, we're, we're live free or die. But, you know, we're asking you to do this one little thing and it's really, it's really not that hard, I don't think. And I, and, and if we all do this, hopefully this will be over sooner. I think that's the main goal that we're trying to get to is I think that's the main goal that we're trying to get to is for this to just all be over. But it's not going to be tomorrow. If it was sixty days, that would be great. Uh, but I want my restaurant open with people packed in. Um, you know, I want to be squeezing between tables, trying to take orders again as soon as possible. And I don't think that's going to happen unless more people wear masks, frankly. I don't think that's going to happen, um, until that happens. So that's why I'm going to vote for this ordinance and, and.
Thank you. Oh, Counsel Matthews.
Someone else wants to chime in? Um, I just wanted to follow up on councillor Kuiper's comment as well. I think the, you know, there's a general stance also that, you know, we shouldn't be putting mandates on people. And I think it's important for us to know that we are, we are putting a mandate on people. But again, this is a mandate during a public health crisis. It's almost what government should be doing. I think for the people that are worried about mandates, um, we have a municipal ordinance committee, which is actually reviewing ordinances. Um, like John said, you know, we have ordinances that require covering buttocks and genitalia, you know? I can't make the public heart, health argument for that like I can now, you know, maybe I don't want to look at it. Um, there's a lot of things in our ordinances that are mandates that you really can't justify this one. I think you can completely justify. And I think regarding, uh, the criteria, what we use moving forward, I think we need to almost have a two-pronged approach, which is, does the CDC still declare a pandemic? And is there, the New Hampshire governor still declaring a state of emergency? I think those are the two criteria we need to use to ensure that this is, again, not arbitrary on our part.
Thank you, I agree. Um, I think that there are, you know, there are lots of laws that we follow for public safety. Uh, it, not texting and driving, um, speed limits.
Wearing seatbelt.
Wearing seatbelts, um, car seats, um, not, dogs not allowed in restaurants. I mean, there are all sorts of, uh, of laws that we have and health codes that we have. I realize that this is a new, uh, a new mandate, um, for sure. Uh, and that's, that's stressful and that's, um, I think it's hard for people. But, um, I do think, I, I, I agree with, uh, councillor Matthews and, and other councillors who have spoken. I, I do think that, um, I think it's necessary. And I think that, um, it can help us, hopefully. You know, if, if this were nationwide or, you know, global, um, it could really significantly help, um, slow the progress and allow us to get to, back to a sense of normalcy. Any other, oh, Counsel Matthews.
Hey, I, I don't know if it's just me, I cannot see the room on video anymore. Rick, can you, I know you're on the Zoom. Can you see it? Them or is their screen black also?
Oh.
Yeah, we are black.
We are black.
Can you hear us though, counsel?
We can't hear you.
I can hear you and I can see, uh, uh, I can see, uh, councillor Matthews.
Oh.
It's coming back.
There it is.
Counsel, can you, can you hear us at least though?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, we're going to just do this as if it was a, a, um, conference call for you, because the public can still see us on channel thirteen.
Okay.
So.
Um, then I am not, um, seeing any other hands. Um, so, uh, if you could call the roll, please. Oh, sorry, councillor Matthews.
It's back.
Now we can't, oh, now he's come.
Counsel Matthews, you muted.
Thank you. You're back, by the way.
Yeah.
I wanted to remove the section in penalties, number three, uh, which is and/or maybe summon to the, uh, we said tenth, uh, Exeter Circuit. What was the exact language we just changed to?
To Exeter, uh, Tenth Circuit, Bruntwood Division?
I wanted to motion to remove and/or maybe summon to this Tenth Circuit, uh.
We cannot. Yeah, the police chief will address that.
So to address that question, the fines system goes through the courts.
Although this is, this is a town ordinance and any revenue that would, that would potentially come in would eventually make its way back to the town of New Market because it's a town ordinance. The process to get the fine would be through the Tenth Circuit, Bruntwood Division. If somebody were to default, meaning not pay the fine, they would be summoned to the Tenth Circuit, Bruntwood Division.
It's there because we have to have it there.
We have to have it there.
I get, I guess the question I had is it doesn't appear anywhere in our current municipal code. So it, it looked to me like this was an outlier having that.
The, one that police chief agrees that we have to have it there, the town attorney thinks we have to have that there. Somebody can second his motion that wishes to do that.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw it. I just, I just wanted to make clear that it's, it's not in our municipal code anywhere else for any other fines.
Well, I think also though, when you look at a municipal code book, it's not going to say every chapter to go to the Tenth Circuit. This, it, it's, it's a different, this is a different animal than our regular ordinances. This is an emergency ordinance. So we have to be specific on those kind of things, but the ordinance book is different than this. I think counsel Dumont.
Actually, you answered it.
Okay, thank you.
So seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Brayback.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
No.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes, ordinance passes six to one as amended.
Thank you. Our next item is.
I have it.
Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash oh four, resolution appropriating twelve thousand dollars from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund to purchase a new server for the town. Um, and this is a resolution in the first reading. Whereas the town's servers used extensively for normal operations for a variety of business functions. And whereas the town's current servers have passed their useful life and have been experiencing significant problems for at least the past year. And whereas the director of finance and administration is proposing the council consider replacing the current servers with a new server and installing virtualization software to enable maximum utilization of the asset. And whereas the Technology Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of thirteen thousand, forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve the expenditure of not more than twelve thousand dollars from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new server with supporting software, first reading, August fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, and then corresponds to the town council, other than the.
That was I.
Many emails that we received. Uh, and then any closing comments by town councillors? Counsel Sanders.
I just want to remind people that the census is still, um, out there. If you have not yet filled out your census, you can do it on, um, on, online in about five minutes. This is how the gov, the federal government determines how we are represented in Congress, as well as how the dollars are spent. So please take that five minutes, send your census in. It means money for the town. So take those five minutes, please, and fill out your census.
Madam Chair, may I make a reminder to the council that on September eighth, we will need as many councillors on hand during the day for the election. And re, also remember, we have two polling places, so we'll need people at each of them. So please, if you can, keep your schedules free that day, um, because we're going to need you.
Uh, and then I just had a comment too, along, uh, that piggybacks on that. Um, absentee ballots are strongly encouraged. So we're encouraging the, the town clerk and town moderator, or encouraging people to, uh, fill out their applications for absentee ballots. For, in order to enable so, uh, allow for social distancing at the polling places. Um, and to not overwhelm the, um, either polling place. So if you could, uh, fill out your application, you could get that of the town, on our, the town's website. Um, it's an easy process. Ballots are now available, so they are being distributed. Um, and you can, um, request them at any time. So it is a process a little bit. So, um, I definitely encourage people to, if you're going to vote absentee, to go ahead and start that process now. Because you have to get the application, mail in the application, they mail you back the ballot, you mailed back, and then you fill out your ballot and you mail it back in. So, um, so start that process as soon as you can.
The ballots can also be dropped in the drop box, correct? At the town hall?
Yes.
Good night.
That was my understanding.
I just want to make sure. I don't want to advertise that if it's not correct.
Okay, because I know some people who've put them in there.
Okay, that's fine then. I just don't want to, I don't want to say something, check with the town clerk's office.
If you could check, please, and let us know.
We'll check with the town clerk's office.
Before any more people drop them off.
And has that information gone out yet about wards and, um?
She's working on that now.
The list of wards. The streets has those, Steve.
Yeah, we've been, we've been publicizing it, but I mean.
Right, right, right. The mailing.
Yes, the mailers have gone out. Um, I've received mine and I know about twenty other people who have got those too.
I haven't, I just didn't get one.
Great. I'm not seeing any other comments, so, um, I will consider us adjourned. And our next meeting is September second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.